As a preliminary matter, this is Judy Vetter, Chair of the Finance Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Adler?
The affirmative.
Vikram Chawla?
Yes.
John Sennelik? I believe John will not be with us this evening. Erin Howard?
I'm here.
Hannah Kane? I did hear from Hannah, she may be participating with us intermittently as they are in full house meetings, so. Mark Murray?
Present.
Jordan Rubin?
Here.
Carlos Garcia? Carlo Garcia? I can see you, Carlos, but I can't hear you. Car- okay, oh, I hear you now. Okay, Carlos is with us. Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
Kristin Lass?
Present.
David Snowden?
Present.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Jeff Holland? Jeff Holland?
Yep. Present, did you guess that? I'm here.
I did this time, okay, thank you.
Good.
General Rowley?
Present.
Okay, thank you. And Christopher Roy?
Present.
Thank you. Good evening to you all. This open meeting of the Finance Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the general materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meetings. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Finance Committee is convening by Google Meet, previously known as Hangouts, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded. Please bear aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer unless asked by the chairperson or the staff. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Judy Vetter, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest/speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask members first, and then staff members, if they have any comments and questions. Where appropriate, I will then call up on the members to offer a motion, and then for a second. Any votes will be taken by roll call. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For public hearings, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. The clerk, Jordan Rubin, will list the name and address of those members in the chat area. Once the list is in the chat area, I will then call on each name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you, and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in closely with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify you. With that, I call the order, the July 22 meeting of the Finance Committee. We have a full agenda tonight. Around an hour and a half into the meeting, we will plan for a five-minute break. So now we'll move on to acceptance of the July 9, 2020, meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes? And if there are any, please just signal by raising your hand. Does any member have any? Let me see. All right, so may I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second to accept the meeting minutes?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so now we are going to do a roll call to accept the meeting minutes. Mark Adler?
Aye.
Vikram Chawla?
Aye.
Erin Howard?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin? Jordan Rubin? You're still muted, Jordan. Thumbs up for Jordan, do you?
Oh, aye, I lost the audio.
Okay. Carlo Garcia? Carlos, I can't hear you.
Aye.
Judy Vetter? Aye. The meeting minutes have been accepted. So we'll now move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar?
Good evening, members of the Finance Committee. I'm going to share my screen and make some introductory comments about the town's response to COVID-19 from a financial standpoint, and how we intend to consider COVID-19 costs versus operating costs as we move forward. So if you just bear with me, I will get things rolling. All right, so one of my main intentions in doing this presentation at this point is to kind of draw a clear line between how we'll financially respond to the extraordinary costs and impacts of COVID-19, really how we have from the beginning, and how we plan to do it in the future, which is clearly separate and apart from our operating budget and our conventional operating services of the town. So I'll go quickly through an overview of the extraordinary expenses in our response, the revenues that we've received that are tied directly to our response and are to enable our response, and kind of tie together how we have and will respond. So there will be similar impacts in both fiscal year 20 and 21. So I'm going to speak generally for most of this presentation, and if there are any specific points I need to call out, a particular fiscal year, I'll try to be clear in doing that, and would be happy to answer any questions about differences between the two fiscal years. So with regards to expenses, there are three main categories, broad-brush categories, that have increased our expenses from the town's standpoint. So our direct response, which includes our public health response, in partnership, in coordination with the Central Massachusetts Regional Public Health Alliance. The town continues to benefit from the alliance, not only from a day-to-day standpoint or pre-COVID times, but also, obviously, during our response to, continued response to COVID-19. Having the resources provided through the city, including Karen Clark, the Public Health Director, Dr. Michael Hirsch, and their entire team has been extraordinary. It allowed us to move through our contact tracing on a more local basis and not have to rely upon the state contact tracing program primarily. We have a number of public health nurses on staff, and they identified a point during the surge whenever they needed additional assistance, and we were able to pull in public, excuse me, Shrewsbury Public School nurses, who normally work in the schools, to do the contact tracing, given their medical knowledge and their ability to help the public health nurses do that. Obviously, we've had, we're unable to alter public safety operations, and we responded from an emergency management standpoint in securing personal protective equipment, or PPE, standing up an emergency operations center at the Town Hall, which was in place for six to eight weeks, but luckily, we never had to activate and utilize. Beyond the direct public health response, there was a direct response to public facility, by public facilities, closing buildings, closing parks, closing courts within parks, cleaning the buildings that we continue to operate from, and reopening and managing the new normal. Really, through the Department of Public Works, with Angela Sennell's leadership, Keith Baldinger's leadership, there's a lot of planning that went into the physical reopening. It was supported by a reopening task force that was led by the Assistant Town Manager to get us back into a more physically present operation on site. We remain in two different groups of employees, and so roughly 50% of our operations are still conducted on any day-to-day basis from the remote environment. And there was a lot of IT infrastructure and purchases that went on in coordination with Selco and the CIO John Covey to enable those remote operations. So from a town standpoint, that was really standing up external offices, smartphones, IP-based phones, and other remote-enabled devices, whether it be a laptop or something similar, to have employees be able to both access their files through a virtual environment, virtual private networks, and just have physical devices to be able to perform professional business operations outside of the Town Hall. And with the school department, obviously, it's a completely separate endeavor that they're currently undertaking with regards to reopening. So they've done a lot of remote education, obviously, from roughly March 10 onwards within the schools. They've also had, you know, a need for their own business operations to occur remotely, and there's costs related to all those, as everyone can understand. So if we look at revenues, one of the biggest challenges that we'll face going forward is we have all these extraordinary costs that we certainly didn't plan for at the beginning of the budget process, and we're struggling to plan for even as we move forward under this quote-unquote "new normal," but we're facing revenue reductions. So of course, the town of Shrewsbury, like most every other local government and anything else that's tied to the general economy, is seeing significant changes. Real and personal property collections are not that much different than they had been in past years for FY '20, but it's certainly an ongoing concern for fiscal year '21. We have the true benefit of having the property tax be our primary revenue source, so it lags behind and is free of most of the sharp spikes in economic trends. So that's good for us, and, you know, people are normally always, you know, it's less discretionary for people. It's often tied to their mortgage, and those collections remain rather strong. But the question remains is, you know, how long can people continue to sustain those payments, and what will fiscal year '21 look like? With regards to state aid, there had been no real impact in fiscal year '20. There are some decisions at the state level that impacted non-state aid revenues to the town, like the delay in meals tax payments and hotel motel payments and things like that, but relatively no impact on the state aid that was promised to us from the Commonwealth. And fiscal '21, again, is a big question mark. We're unsure what state aid numbers are going to be. We hope a best-case scenario, especially for Chapter 70, which is our education revenue, that they're quote-unquote "held harmless" at the FY '20 level. I think the only way that that's possible is the state was, you know, preparing for a significant increase in Chapter 70 across the Commonwealth, not necessarily in Shrewsbury, given our situation with the current formula, but, you know, that promise across the state, I think, makes it more likely that we'll get closer to FY '20 levels than we otherwise would have if it wasn't for those legislative changes. With regards to local receipts, 11 of the 22 local receipt categories that we tracked for fiscal year '20 was lower than we estimated. Fiscal year '20 local receipts still came in roughly $700,000 greater than budgeted, but as everyone knows, that's planned, and it's roughly, you know, probably half of the exceedance of what it would have been if we'd remained on pace as we were on at the end of March, and three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. I also note here on the slide that if you compare, you know, we had 11 categories that were lower than estimate in fiscal year '20, but we only had one category that was lower than estimate in fiscal year 2019. So obviously, we've had to make significant change, of course, for local receipts for fiscal year '21. With regards to utility revenues, three of the four enterprise funds brought in revenues lower than we originally estimated, and we have a number of questions related to that and need to do some further analysis. You know, will that be a trend? Is there some correction in water consumption from a business standpoint or residential standpoint? And we'll be doing analysis and updating the committee, but we have made changes to the total revenue that we're projecting in a downward fashion for fiscal year '21. And then with regards to other revenues that I just wanted to touch on briefly, excuse me, there's some school-specific revenues that we just don't know how the state are going to fund, and the largest category being circuit breaker for special education. A swing of 10% or 15% could be catastrophic in, you know, $500,000 or $600,000 for the total revenues that the school receives, and of course, those are not part of our general fund revenue model. They kind of sit off the side, but are critical to those operations in school. It's certainly something that this committee always hears from the Assistant Superintendent Collins and Superintendent Sawyer, and you'll hear more about that from them tomorrow evening. And then just wanted to note, on the municipal side of things, we've seen a significant decrease in the amount of recreational revenue that we've received throughout the springtime. It's actually led to the furlough of our recreation coordinator, with hopes that as the virus goes away, which we're all hoping for, and recreational activities may be able to resume in the fall and winter, that we have that staff in place when there's ongoing activities. And since we canceled some recreation programs, we had to make that tough decision. With regards to our response to the revenue reductions, first and foremost, as always, spending reductions. Fiscal year, in fiscal year '20, discretionary and opportunistic spending freezes, discretionary spending freezes, you know, on travel, training, conferences, things like that, which obviously didn't occur anyway. We had hiring freezes, delay of hiring as much as possible, and really scrutinized every expenditure over $300 through our requisition process to make sure it was absolutely necessary. And it did lead to higher turnbacks. We're still finalizing those numbers and, you know, look to share with a fiscal year '20 closeout, you know, before the fall with the committee, but, you know, our initial look at it is that, you know, turnbacks are up at least about 50% over last year. So that's, puts us in a better overall financial situation. Opportunistic freezes is, you know, sounds like a little bit too of a, you know, favorable term, but, you know, obviously, we weren't operating schools, we weren't, we didn't have as high utility bills, we weren't consuming as much product, and that led to opportunities for additional funding being left over in the budget. So we saved where we could. We discontinued our contracted cleaners for the buildings while they were under low operations. We brought a lot of those back, but certainly not to the level that they were in February, March of last year. For fiscal year '21, our total revenues that we are anticipating using or estimating is about $4 million less than we brought you in the budget hearings in February and March. Our operating budget is, has been reduced by about $2.1 million. We're using the money that was going to go into stabilization to offset reductions within the operating budget, and we need to really take a look at those special revenue categories that I touched on, like circuit breaker. I'll provide a much more in-depth overview of the revenue model, which hasn't changed much since our previous conversations, but that'll occur with the operating budget tomorrow. With regards to expense, you know, expense increases, you know, we have these extraordinary increases that we have to do additional things, whether it's clean a public restroom at a park every day, where we used to do it less than every day, or buy PPE, hand sanitizer, sneeze guards, all those things in order to operate. So we have these extraordinary expenses. Our plan in addressing those extraordinary expenses is intergovernmental aid. So thus far, we can project and have been received through formula, quote-unquote guaranteed, $4,898,000 in intergovernmental aid through a number of really federally oriented stimulus or response packages. That total amount does not include our total Federal Emergency Management Agency costs. That's more of a rolling application that I'll have the Assistant Manager touch on, who's been in close conversations and in leadership with Deputy Chief Covey, as his role is Emergency Management Director, and we'll get to that in a minute. Certainly significant challenges related to this intergovernmental aid, and I think it's going to be an important part of the balance of this conversation for you all to understand, really, two things. We cannot use this $4.9 million to offset any of the revenue reductions that we're going to experience, that $3.9 million revenue loss. We can't, we can't use it for those purposes, general revenue replenishment. And we have a very narrow period of award, and what I mean by that is, currently, every federal stimulus dollar that has been passed in Washington has an expiration date of December 30th, 2020. So funds can only be expended through that date, at least as we know it right now. And since that's all we know, that's all we can plan for to be reasonable, and that puts us in a situation where if we take it the whole way down to a line item on both the town and school side, we almost have too much federal stimulus dollars. It's not enough to get us through what we think a full year of response would, you know, require us to expend and get us through the whole next fiscal year, but those dollars end on December 30th, and therefore, within that time period, we haven't really identified dollar-for-dollar the ability to spend all of it, which is frustrating. And we've taken a, we began to take a number of steps in partnering with not only Representative Kane and Senator Moore, but we're working with municipalities in the area who, you know, kind of echo this, or are all in the same position to work with Congressman McGovern and our federal senators, US senators, to try to get this changed, or get a bigger window of opportunity with a new federal stimulus package. So how does that aid really break down? We received a small $27,000 Public Health Trust Fund grant, and those funds have an expiration date of August 31st of 2020, and we were able to use those really right off the bat, and they backdated it till March for any expenditures, and it's for our direct public health response. So again, the partnership with the City of Worcester is really great for us financially, because they're seeing a lot more additional costs than we are directly, and we certainly have some more money earmarked for them in the operating budget for next year, in case we need it from an operating standpoint. But they've really taken the blow on the extraordinary costs for COVID-19, and they've received a lot more grant funding that they've used in response, and that's really helped the town of Shrewsbury. I'd say roughly, rough numbers, we've spent about 50% of these funds and likely will not expend all of them, but they've been critical in our response for additional staffing time, the funding of the salaries for the school nurses who are used for contract tracing, contact tracing, and all those different direct responses to the pandemic. Our CARES Act funding is $3.347 million, again, with a December 30 expiration date. CARES Act funds can be used most broadly out of any of these categories. It has to be an extraordinary cost related to the crisis, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a direct cost like a public health salary or something like that. So it can be for a laptop computer, for, you know, administrative assistant, DPW, to enable their remote operations. So this is our most flexible bucket of funding. Our initial application, we drew down about $918,000 for our use through June 30th and beyond then. We're not exactly sure what the application process will be to access the rest of those funds, but most likely will be every other month in coordination with the State Department of Revenue and their application process. So every dollar that we applied for in the first round was granted to us. We've hired a special position, a financial manager, her name's Alice Farrow, former town accountant and has worked in school of financial administration, longtime resident of the town of Shrewsbury. She's funded through the CARES Act, and her sole job is to manage the clear and accurate documentation of these expenses, invoices, rationale for the expenses, and submit our application. Without that dedicated effort, we would not be, we would not have been as successful in that first application, or it would just been really a management nightmare for us. So there's another package of funding called Coronavirus Relief Fund. It really does flow through the CARES Act, but it was allocated directly for the Schools' Department response to the fiscal, or the 2020, 2021 school year. It was a per pupil allocation of $225, and we received just about $1.4 million for it. We've not drawn down any of those funds yet, obviously, as we move closer to August and hopefully, the reopening of schools. Those would be the first dollars that get expended. I'll talk about that in a little bit. There was a small grant that came through, also, it's called an ESSER grant through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, $133,000. It was allocated based on the federal Title I economic conditions of the community, and therefore, our allocation was a little less, since Shrewsbury is a little more affluent in many aspects of the state and can only be used for school department funds as well. With regards to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, we're eligible for 75% of our eligible costs that are directly related to the emergency declaration and the town's response to the public health crisis. That emergency declaration was put in place March 13th, 2020, and I will ask that Assistant Town Manager Kristin Lass talk a little bit about this process and how we're managing that application process.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. I'm happy to present to the Finance Committee this evening related to our utilization of the FEMA Public Assistance Designation Program. As he stated, on March 13th, the Commonwealth received emergency declaration from the federal government for the coronavirus pandemic. This is a little bit different than the other FEMA applications we have put in in the past. In the past, generally, it was related to some sort of storm event, like the ice storms or a long-duration snowstorm. So that had really a set duration in time of two to five days or something like that. This is more open-ended. The disaster has not ended yet, so it did open on March 13th, but again, it has not ended. So the town of Shrewsbury is eligible to submit for cost reimbursements up to 75% for for the management control and reduction of immediate threats to public health and safety, including things like the emergency operation center cost, disinfectant of eligible public facilities, emergency medical care, setting up a shelter, medical facility supplies and services, and then others that I won't necessarily go into. We have determined that it's in our best interest to submit for these on a rolling basis. Myself and Deputy Chief Colby and Accountant Mary Thompson have met with FEMA several times. And this is all an online portal system where you submit your request for reimbursement. It gets reviewed and then gets turned back. So currently, we have decided that we would be requesting reimbursement on a rolling date of March 13th to June 30th, 2020. And that currently is a value of $54,283. We are required to put together detailed narratives noting what the public assistance is for. And then we estimate that we'll start at July 1st, 2020 and perhaps go another three months, see where we're at. And if we have a substantial amount to allocate, we would then submit again. One other thing to note is that we are eligible for up to a certain percent of management costs as well. So the time that our staff spends directly related to collecting information, data and filing this grant, we can request certain reimbursement for that as well. So again, we've done FEMA reimbursements in the past. However, this is slightly different due to the long duration of the event. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Kristen. So moving on from those details, want to talk a little bit about our general approach for COVID-19 and fiscal year 21, both on the COVID side and the non-COVID side. You know, we need to use our current facts and estimated unknowns. And we're doing our best to manage that on a day-to-day basis. We obviously have significant questions about state aid, any for our operations, any future federal stimulus dollars or state dollars that are identified for the town. I want to stress that my main goal of this presentation is that we are separating extraordinary COVID-19 costs from our ongoing operating costs as much as possible. And, you know, that will be our focus throughout the fall. And hopefully that, you know, every day and week that goes by, that we learn a little bit more and the state puts their budget in place and we're really able to plan for a longer horizon. But I think having town meeting, getting this initial budget in place, knowing that we're only about two to two and a half months away from our normal annual, normal fall town meeting date. We can't look past that date because we're going to have to make changes that soon. So again, just acknowledging the special revenue reductions are going to be a challenge. They're more so a challenge for the school department. And then, you know, again, we'll make any changes and fill any gaps that we have to in the fall, depending on what additional information we have at that time. With regard to the use of the aid, general order that we're following is that, you know, we're going to expend the public health funds, public health trust funds first, the FEMA funds second, CARES Act funds third. There's a symbiotic relationship between the CARES Act and FEMA. We are allowed to use the CARES Act funding for the town's 25% match for the FEMA. So essentially, you know, 100% of the FEMA costs in theory, if we dip into that other bucket, will be funded for the purposes that Ms. Lass had talked about. With regards to the schools, they also share in the use of the public health trust funds, as I mentioned, for the public health nurses or the school nurses providing public health services. Will rely upon some FEMA funding, although quite limited. They utilize CARES Act in the third position through June 30th. And as we look to costs related to the next school year, they'll pivot and begin to use coronavirus relief funds on a primary basis and burn through that $1.4 million towards the extraordinary costs that they've identified. And then with the long duration, which I didn't touch on in the previous slide, you may have noticed that this ESSER DESI grant is available to us through June 30th, 2022. I have asked that the superintendent consider offering or consider utilizing that grant at any point after January or December 31st, January 1st of this year to get that in play. It would be nice to set it aside, but whenever we're looking at a gap, because we don't have any other outside stimulus funds to use, I think it's important to use that as soon as sense, makes sense. So here's a summary of the funds that we've used or allocated, excuse me. So with regards to the public health trust funds, we've allocated $22,000 of that to the town, $4,000 of that to the schools. And these are earmarks that we've agreed upon between myself and the superintendent of schools and then a small working group of two Board of Selectmen members and two members of the school committee who have been meeting weekly throughout the pandemic. The CARES Act, we've allocated $2 million to the schools, $1.3 million to the town. Coronavirus relief, obviously, all goes to the schools. The DESI goes to the schools. And then right now through June 30th, with the 25% reduction, because we can only get 75% of the eligible costs, we've expended $47,000 or we should receive $47,000 on the town side and $7,200 on the school side. So if we look at that $4.9 million, about one and a half to the town, three and a half to the school department, that puts us in a good position. Again, the challenge is the December 30th termination date for those periods of award. So that's really the details of the presentation that I want to go through. Again, with my hope of setting aside COVID costs away from operating costs, it's going to be a little bit more challenging for the school to draw such a bright line, especially with the limitations. But I really am confident the best approach is to get us into October and then see where the federal stimulus dollars are. If they're not going to come to fruition, we may have to take extraordinary measures and put several million dollars of free cash into play to be able to operate the schools and provide town response. I hope that we don't get there. Our partners at the state and federal government are always have better access to more funding, especially the feds since they can print it. But we'll have to do what we have to do at the local level. But now's not the time to really panic about these extraordinary COVID costs. Let's wait to see what happens in the fall. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. I'm going to be happy to answer any questions that folks may have. And I'll leave my screen up for a little bit, just in case someone wants me to go back to a different slide.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar and Ms. Lass for the presentation. Finance Committee members, if you have a question, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Mark Murray?
Thank you, Judy, and thank you, Kevin. Really appreciate the clarity of all this. I just want to make sure I heard you right, Kevin, relative to the CARES Act. That $3.3 million. You said that $2 million of it, you expect to go to the schools and $1.2 million to the town. And I just wanted to make sure that I heard that right.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. That's what we have agreed to. And, you know, the only caveat that I have on that is, you know, it can go both ways. So obviously, public facilities provides a critical role in any situation related to the schools. But even more so whenever their responsibilities in cleaning the buildings are critical to onsite education. So there may have to be a little bit of give and take between those two buckets as an internal allocation that we've agreed to in principle. I honestly think the most likely scenario is that the town would need a full $1.3 million. But, you know, depending on how things go and what the requirements are and what Dr. Sawyer thinks are in the best educational interest of our students, I could see public facilities having more cost than we're anticipating, which, you know, right now, if we had to make a good estimate, it's over $350,000 for the school year.
And just to follow up, if I may, Madam Chairman?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
And the school department tomorrow will share with us where, how they're going to use that money, I would assume?
I think yes. I think they have a great plan. And they can, you know, delineate between what they see as expenses before December 30th and then after. And I know there's about 90 school days before that date and 100 after. So obviously, we don't, we don't have enough funds to get through the full fiscal year, but they will, they can demonstrate their response and a lot of additional costs in order to meet those three models that they're required to pull together for the school year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other committee members that have a question? Please signal by raising your hand. Going once, twice? Thank you. Seeing that there are no further questions or comments, again, thank you, Mr. Mizikar and Ms. Lass for the report. We are now going to move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so now I'm going to do a roll call to open the public hearing. Mark Godler?
Aye.
Vicom Charbonne?
Aye.
Aaron Howard?
Aye.
Hannah Kane?
Aye.
Mark Murray?
Aye.
Jordan Rubin? Jordan?
Aye. Sorry about that.
Carlos Garcia?
Aye.
Judy Vetter, aye. We will now review town meeting warrant articles for the August 8th town meeting. The plan is to review a portion of the articles tonight and then we'll vote to continue the public hearing to tomorrow night, where we will review the remaining articles. At the conclusion of our full review of all of the articles tomorrow night, we will close the public hearing. Then the Finance Committee will discuss and vote on each article. In the interest of time, I ask that the presentation of each article be as concise as possible, hopefully no longer than five to 10-minute timeframe. After each article, I will ask if there is any comment from the Finance Committee. If members could please indicate if you have a question by raising your hand, I will then recognize each of you in the order I see you. Once the committee has concluded their comments, I will then ask for any comments by the staff and then I'll ask the public if they have any comments. Please allow me to recognize you before you speak. From the public, we will request your name and your address and you will then speak in the order that you appear on the list. I ask the comments and the questions also be kept concise. So the first articles that we're going to take a look at are the non-operating budget financial. We're going to begin with Article 1. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you. Article 1 is an article that would move funds within the fiscal year 20 budget. So this is obviously a legacy article that we would have utilized if the town meeting occurred within, prior to June 30th. But since that did not happen, we would move to have this article defeated as it's unnecessary.
Sorry. Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Any questions or comments from the staff? Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article 3.
Thank you. Article 3 is an article that's normally more towards the end of the warrant process and is very similar to Articles 4 and 5, so I'll just touch on all three of those. These are supplemental funds that are added. Article 3 and 4 come in from Selco. With Article 3 in mind, there's $800,000 that comes in from the light, from the cable TV division, which is a payment lieu of taxes of $800,000. There's $237,569 from the light department and then $500,000 that's utilized from free cash. So these funds are really used to offset the impact to the tax rate. Without these funds, we would not be able to have a balanced budget and therefore the tax rate would have to increase or expenditures and services would have to be reduced without them. So it really supplements the overall revenue model of the town and primarily comes in from Selco, but we do utilize $500,000 in free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So that's kind of commentary on Article 3 and 4, both related to money coming from Selco.
And 5, really? I mean, it's the same concept. Yep, it's just to reduce the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. Then, so we'll take, does the committee have any questions on Article 3, 4 or 5? Mr. Adler?
Thank you. Kevin, I know we're doing it out of order for lots of good reasons and that's fine. Traditionally, we put that $500,000 free cash transfer at the end. And I had always thought it was because it was to make sure everything worked out okay throughout the evening if there was any problems. But if we're putting this at the beginning, is that going to be an issue? That's, it's really just that.
Yep. It could make it a little bit more complicated if things don't go as the motions are laid out. It does follow the operating budget, which is Article 2, which I think would be the biggest challenge. So we can manage it either way. So, but being after the operating budget, I think, puts us in the, is the primary position that needs to be in.
And if, may I? And if, horror of horrors, something were to happen later on in the evening, excuse me, the evening, the long Saturday that we're going to be doing town meeting, we could, of course, move to reconsider and open this one up and tweak it if we absolutely had to, right?
That is absolutely correct. I think in theory, what you're doing, whenever you get to Article 5, you, you know, have a surplus, so to speak, on the actions that you've taken thus far in the evening. Or day, morning.
Okay. Do any other committee members have a question or comment on Article 3, 4 or 5? Okay, seeing none, do, does the staff have any questions or comments on Article 3, 4 or 5? Okay, seeing none, are there anybody in the public that wishes to comment on Articles 3, 4 and 5? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to Article number 6. Mr. Mizikar?
So Article number 6 is a traditional article that normally falls early in the warrant and it is to pay the out-of-pocket medical expenses of retired and disabled police officers and firefighters of the town. It's done so in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 100B. These individuals are retired and disabled in the line of duty and the town pays things like any out-of-pocket expenses and co-pays for them throughout the course of the year. This year, that sum is $9,719, which is a little higher than previous years. However, all costs have been verified and we intend to raise these funds through the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Are there any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Mr. Mizikar, is there a cap on these expenditures or is it pretty much unlimited?
In theory, there is no cap. These individuals are on our health insurance plans and, you know, therefore we can gauge and understand for the most part, you know, they're out-of-pocket costs and expenditures. So, you know, every retiree, you know, primarily has to go in Medicare, Medicare-type plan, so it is somewhat predictable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Okay, seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Article number 15. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you. Article 15 is to set the maximum spending limitations for two revolving accounts that are established in Article 22 of the town's general bylaws. First article, first revolving account is First article, first revolving account is the Council on Aging Transportation Fund, setting the spending limitation at $75,000. These revolving accounts are established to receive revenue and cover the cost of those services without impacting the tax rate. So those funds come in from transportation revenues and are expended on the same. $75,000 is the traditional amount that we receive or set the limitation at. The Donahue Rowing Center is a, is another revolving account that we utilize when we take in revenues for the rental of space and the facility itself over the course of the year. We normally set that limitation at $250,000. This year, we've set it at $300,000 because public facilities needs to make some more substantial capital improvement repairs to the facility and therefore the spending request has been increased from 250 to 300.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. Are there any questions or comments from the finance committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article Eighteen.
Yep, so Article Eighteen, I'm happy to have on the video conference with us this evening, Mr. Christopher Roy, who is Selco's new general manager. He's been in the chair, so to speak, since Monday. So today's his third full day. We're happy to have him here at the finance committee and on the town's leadership team and brings with him extraordinary experience in public power and cable internet service provision operations, most recently in the towns of Concord and Belmont, but also in the private sector, power industry for some time in his early career. So I'm fortunate to have Mr. Roy here, help me explain this article. The basis of it from a financial standpoint is a request from Selco to utilize the borrowing power in full faith and credit of the town of Shrewsbury and the AAA bond rating to access the municipal bond market and secure $15 million towards a significant upgrade. And I would ask the chair to allow Mr. Roy to provide the details of that project.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, welcome and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you. That was a very gracious introduction. I appreciate that. Yes, it's, it's quite my pleasure to present what is, I mean, a really thorough analysis here that, you know, Mr. Hale and the Selco team had put together. And so the, the premise is to really bring the cable TV operation into the future, leveraging the fiber as, as the basis for that. And so in order to do so, that requires basically building out a fiber infrastructure that will reach each home and business within the community. And so this article is intended to cover, in order to do that, there's an analysis done by CTC Communications that forecasted a $30 million expense. And, and so over the last several years, Selco has saved about half of that to, to cover that out of cash and then the other 15, remaining $15 million is what is being requested for borrowing. And that would, that would cover the project from start to finish, including build out. There's three phases, just to highlight a couple of the steps in that process. It's built to the premise, built to the home, and then start converting technology within people's, people's homes and businesses. And so this, this is intended to cover the entire process.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. Thank you, Mr. Roy. I have a question, like, it says it's going to be over multiple years. How many years are we looking at before there's fiber to the house?
So that would really, in, in large part, depend on where you live as a phased approach. It's, uh, it would vary in, in that timeframe. I believe that the horizon for that is about five years to, to try and get that. I'd have to double check my summary sheet from, from that study. But, but really within that timeframe, that, that both encompasses the, the time needed to perform the construction as well as keep up with the demands to convert folks from the, the legacy cable system to fiber. So that, that time is, is a dual, double-edged sword, if you will, where it's, it's both a construction time limit as well as a conversion for subscribers.
All right. Well, that would be exciting to get fiber to the house. And then one other question that I had, the last line says, "Selco funds will be used to fund the repayment of this debt." So if I'm understanding, we're borrowing the money to be able to use, as you said, Mr. Msakar, the, our good bond rating to get a lower, I'm assuming to get a lower rate and then Selco will be paying us back? Is, is that correct?
Primarily, yes. So I mean, really this, you know, this debt will sit, you know, on the municipal side of the, the house and just like the, you know, there's about $436,000 that Selco currently, you know, provides to us for debt service now. They would do that, whatever the cost of this project is, whatever the cost of this $15 million is on an annual basis. And so there's no impact to the taxpayers. It all comes in through the Selco ratepayers, transferred over to the town. That covers the cost. So there's no debt exclusion, nothing like that, no tax impact. It's all Selco funded for this, this 15 million. And so, you know, Selco has really two options. One, they can borrow through the full faith of the town and the other is going through EMWIC, which is a municipal partner of theirs in the public power industry. But, you know, the, the bond rating makes this very attractive and beneficial to the community.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Charbonne, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Judy. First of all, I, I think this is a great idea to move to, to fiber technology. That's, that's a really great move in terms of modernizing the technological base of our, our town. But my question is more of like, as the industry moves to things like 5G and, and streaming is basically replacing cable services in a big sort of way, do you see us able to basically justify the expenditure in terms of repaying the debt if services go down as a result of 5G or streaming?
So I'll start and then I'll let Mr. Roy talk a little bit. I don't want to step on his toes, but I want to support as much as possible. So right now, Selco has more internet service customers than cable TV customers. And I think that this initiative is a clear recognition of exactly what you said, Mr. Charbonne, which is that video will be more of an internet function than a cable function in the future. And fiber, we believe, is, is future-proof as it comes for a business operation. So, you know, as I know you're probably well aware, given your, the job that you have, you know, your day job and this is just your hobby, or one of your hobbies, that, you know, 5G itself needs a fiber backhaul to be able to support it. So I think it puts the, you know, Mr. Roy mentioned a double-edged sword, you know, this is another two-pronged advantage that comes to the town by investing in this infrastructure. One, it provides video services to customers and makes the community desirable from a resident's standpoint, especially in a, in a work-from-home environment. And two, we may be able to leverage that infrastructure for outside parties if 5G does make its way into the community.
Mr. Roy, did you want to add anymore or?
No, that, that was outstanding. I, I could not add another detail to that.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
I do.
Carlos Garcia?
Yeah. You may have already mentioned it, but I might have just missed it. You said that this would be done in three phases. I was just curious when the first phase would begin, how soon that would be.
Would you like me to take that? So that would really ideally begin as soon as possible. Candidly, I have the meeting with Matrix next week, in which we'll discuss the full details of the timeline. But I know, especially as, as we've talked about at length, you know, with the COVID environment, work from home, really there is a pressure to do that ASAP. And my understanding is there has been some fiber work already, already completed as well as ongoing. So I, I think the official start date is, is really underway and this would just formalize and allow us to extend that and continue that work to reach everybody.
Great. And then just a follow-up. So I know that some areas in the community already have fiber. It's a small area. Do you anticipate that rates for the fiber packages would change as we expand? If my question makes sense.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I, I think, at least in my experience, and I hope, or, the, my experience is rates are a combination of monitoring the competitive rate environment as well as the actual cost needed to build out the infrastructure. And so I think having the predictability of finance, monitoring the, the market rate environment, that is what would drive a rate change. And so I, I don't think there's any direct necessarily answer that said you, you bring on X number of more subscribers and that results in a rate impact of Y. It would be more a product of the ongoing market conditions, taking into account the already fixed costs of the debt.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Other, any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, are there any other question or comments from the staff? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article Number Nineteen. Mr. Msakar?
Sure, thank you. So Article Number Nineteen is a traditional article of the town meeting warrant. It's our Chapter 90 funding, which is state transportation aid funding program that we utilize for our roadway improvement projects throughout the course of the year. The Commonwealth has issued notes for the transportation program this year and the town has been allocated $989,552. So this article would merely accept and allow for the appropriation and use of those funds.
Sorry, I had a dog jumping on me. Any questions or comments from the finance committee? Any questions or comments from the staff? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, well, thank you. So seeing none, we'll now move on to Article Number Twenty. Mr. Msakar?
Thank you. Another traditional article of the warrant, which is the transfer of $18,000 for the sale of cemetery lots to the cemetery department for the care and improvement, embellishment, and enlargement of the cemetery. So this is, again, a standing article. There's $93,798 currently in the sale of Watts account and we use these funds throughout the year just for that, the, the care of the cemetery and any expansion and improvements that are required.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to Article Twenty-One. Mr. Msakar?
Thank you. This is an article that we would look to defeat. It's an article that would be utilized to pay any bills from a prior year. So FY '20 or prior at this point, there are no known bills at this time, so we again ask for defeat of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll now move on to the B section, the General Capital Improvement Plan and the Utility Capital Improvement Plans for, for the fiscal year 2021. Article, we'll begin with Article Number Nine. Mr. Msakar?
Thank you. So Article Number Nine is the capital improvement program for the sewer account. And as you have noted before, Madam Chair, that we have both the Water and Sewer Superintendent, Mr. Dan Rowley, and the DPW Director, Mr. Jeff Holland, with us this evening. They will be able to provide you with the details and I would just intro it to say that we're going to seek the approval of $1,636,900 to undertake various capital improvements within the sewer system. So I will turn, turn it over to Mr. Rowley for his comments on those details.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. So we have identified a number of capital improvements for this year for the sewer system, which includes $430,000 in inflow and infiltration work. This is our 10th year of this program. We have two more years after this year to complete one full cycle of the town. We have earmarked $160,000 for sewer pump station evaluations, where we are looking to conduct comprehensive evaluations of the Rolf AV and Maple AV pump stations. We've identified $475,000 for radio telemetry upgrades to finish the upgrades of the SCADA to the remaining stations. There's about 17 of them. We've identified $500,000 for sewer pump station improvements and we are looking to replace two vehicles, one to share with the water and that total is $71,000. It's worth noting, this is about $80,000 less than when we met back in February due to reduced revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Msakar. Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Adler?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. First, Dan, you said reduced revenue. So have we actually seen or are we just anticipating a reduction in revenue, I presume COVID-related?
I believe we're anticipating that. It will be reduced.
Okay. And second, thank you. And second question, can you tell me about the source, how, how the inflow and infiltration fund is, is funded? Where, where, where does that come from?
I could, I can take that. So over the course of time, kind of a previous financial model, the town, at town meeting would set aside annual rate of revenues into an INI or inflow and infiltration account. So it's basically a warrant article that was previously approved by another town meeting and held there for, only to be expended for these purposes. So it's really a double appropriation. We're currently working through that model and, you know, kind of doing away with it. You'll see that we are using $416,000 from that fund. That will exhaust all those funds and then we'll just raise the appropriate amount of funds every year in the, in the annual rate and allocate them out in the capital plan.
If, can I just have a quick follow? I'm sorry, but, so the infiltration fund, INI fund, is that and was that funded from sewer surplus? And I know formally it's appropriated, but is it appropriated from funds from sewer surplus?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Msakar, you'd mentioned in your town manager's report that there were three utilities that were down on revenue. You mentioned water specific. Obviously, I guess sewer is one of them. What is the other one?
I believe Mr. Snowden's on the line, who is the business manager for the DPW and he'd probably be the best person to answer that question.
Hello, Kevin. Judy, if you just could repeat the first part of the question, the two funds that were?
Well, you mentioned, there were, at the beginning, there were three, Mr. Msakar mentioned that there were three utilities where the revenue was down from what was expected. One of them, what, you mentioned water. Obviously, on this conversation, sewer is one of them. I was wondering what the third utility is? I was wondering what the third utility is.
The third utility in this case would have been stormwater. But we were able to capture a decent amount of that revenue with the final billing for the municipal account. So it was more of an internal transferring of funds to make sure that the account met where it needed to be at.
Is that specific for stormwater?
I'm sorry, Judy, I didn't quite understand the question.
What, was the internal accounting specific to stormwater?
That is correct. It's specific to parcels of land that had no other utilities associated with them, vacant parcels. So there was a remainder of, I don't know, maybe like 200 or so parcels. I can't recall exactly that. We had to finish the account management of, and that has now been completed.
Because I'm kind of aware, I just want to know what the three were, because you did mention that your capital budget request is less than it was going to be previously because revenue was down. I think you said you've reduced it by about 80,000. Do we know why our water and, obviously, water and sewer are tied together? But do we know why our sewer revenue slash our water revenue is below what was expected?
I believe the superintendent, Rowley, he did sort of leave with it. We believe and we are anticipating that the revenue may be lower. We have seen that because interest rates were extended to June 30th, that there are some outstanding bills still out there for water and sewer. So we may capture that revenue within the first couple of months of this fiscal year. And we could have a better idea of whether or not we were overly cautious or not, you know, as we approached the fall.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. We've talked about the fact that bills were delayed, so it's still that effect. Okay, that's good news. And so, yeah, if you can keep the committee apprised of that, that's excellent. Any other questions or comment from the Finance Committee? Okay, seeing none, any further questions or comment from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to Article number 11. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. This is the capital improvement plan for the Water Division. And the total improvements projected or requested are $21,6862. And again, Mr. Rowley can detail those improvements to you best.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So on the water side, we projected revenues to be down about $219,000. So as Mr. Snowden said, we'll know better in the next few months. For these capital improvements, we've identified $1,543,862 for water main replacements, $50,000 to replace the second pump at the West Main Booster Station, $16,000 to replace, it's half the cost of replacement pickup for our resident engineering inspector, $9,000 for a John Deere riding mower to maintain our stations, and $50,000 to purchase valve exercising equipment. So we can do unidirectional flushing and maintain our valves with town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 13. Mr. Mizikar.
Great, thank you. This is the capital improvement request for the Stormwater Department. It's a request of $250,000. And Mr. Holland will provide some detailed and planning efforts for the use of these funds. So I'll turn it over to the DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Jeff Holland, and so we have $250,000 that we're asking for for drainage improvements. For a long time, the previous highway superintendent had a long list of projects that he wanted to accomplish for drainage improvements. And we are working down that list. This year, we are doing, or FY20, we're actually doing Boylston Circle. FY21, we're not sure which one we're going to tackle first, but we will evaluate that with the assistance of the highways division manager to determine what streets we will be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Adler?
Thank you. Jeff, Boylston Circle is my neighborhood, and I thought the stormwater drains were already rebuilt there about two years ago. Did I misunderstand?
So, Mr. Adler, so last year, we did what we called Phase One. The contract came in higher than we anticipated. We originally were going to go up past Gulf Street, but we didn't have the funds to go that far. This year, we will extend drainage, which will include the Gulf Street intersection. I think we're actually doing a couple basins up on Gulf Street before it starts heading back down, heading westward. This will head toward the cemetery to the top of the hill. So it just adds on to the drain line that we had put in last year, which we designed for, but we didn't have the funds to finish. So this is Phase Two, so to speak.
Okay, if I can, I'm sorry, Judy. The article talks about raising the funds directly from the receipt, but the original language of the warrant talks about potentially borrowing. Since I assume, it looks like we're not doing that, which is fine, it's available from receipts. Obviously, it's not going to need to reach any fancy threshold at town meeting. But also, do we need to go through this process every time we want a project done? Or can't normally, like, what's the procedure for having the funds for the stormwater account fund stormwater events? Do we always have to go back and forth like this every year?
I guess I'd just like a little clarification as to whether you're asking, do we need to segment out capital improvements? Or could we do them in one fell swoop with the operating budget? Is that really what you're asking?
No, actually, I mean, I guess so, right? Because the operating budget for the Stormwater Department comes from stormwater receipts.
Correct.
And, which is great, but, and the capital also comes from it. So, yeah, I guess what you're saying is we segregate it, segment these two categories. Why does that have to be separated? And I guess this is more of a meta question for how municipal budgeting works. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is no real requirement. This is, you know, we used to do a separate warrant article for each project. And since I've been here, we've kind of walked away from that and did one operating budget article and one capital article for each. There's certainly no reason not to. There certainly, we could do it either way. There's not necessarily a right or a wrong. I think this lends a little bit of clarity to the one-time cost versus the ongoing costs of the operation of those various utilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article number 14. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening. This is the general capital budget for the town, which includes all nonutility aspects of our operations. And this budget has been significantly reduced by about $775,000 in comparison to the plan that we presented to you in the original budget hearings and with fiscal projection one. The total for these improvements are $1.1 million. The largest and most significant capital improvement that we intend to undertake is the replacement of the roof in associated rooftop mechanical units at the Parker Road preschool. That roof has significantly deteriorated and is a constant and ongoing leak within it that damages the interior, so it's much needed. We would leverage both this $500,000 in free cash plus additional green communities funds for that project in particular. Just briefly on the other projects, the second largest one is the replacement of a Plow and Standard Truck, a 1999 vehicle. Would be replaced with a new vehicle at the cost of $240,000. And then we replaced two marked police vehicles. And that's a reduction from four marked police vehicles that we do on a normal year. We weren't really thinking of it at the time, of course, but the utilization of poll pads, which is an electronic tablet that downloads from the state voter registration system and then is disconnected and used for early voting and voting at a traditional onsite polling place. $29,000 in support of the town clerk's office renovations at our parks, Dean Park Ballfield renovations of $140,000, $45,000. And we'll also leverage investment from private entities like the Little League. And then within the Engineering Division, continued asset maintenance for emergency action plans for two dams and design improvements of public ways and assets within the Engineering Division. So in summary, it's a $1.1 million plan. We utilize free cash for the vast majority of this. The reason that the plan was reduced was really to preserve more financial assets of the community since we were forced to push much more into the operating budget. And hopefully, we have the ability to have a slightly larger plan next year and take on some of the projects that we had to peel back out.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing...
Judy, you're mute.
Thank you. All right. How, I guess I was mute the entire time. All right, so...
You need to call the meeting to order. We haven't started yet, Judy.
All right. Wow, I must have fallen asleep. Sorry. So I guess, did I ask if there, did you hear me ask for if there's any other comments?
Yes.
All right. And for staff and for public? And then, so, okay, so now we're moving on to land disposal and acquisitions, which begins with Article 23. All right, so I don't know what happened. Mr. Mizikar.
Great, thank you. So Article 23. Madam Chair, if I could have the assistant manager, Kristin Last, describe this article and her work with the Beal Reuse Committee and what our intention for the disposition of this property is.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Article 23 is a request that the town vote to transfer town-owned property at 1 through 7 Maple Avenue, which is the current Beal School in the center of town, originally acquired for school purposes to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of making the property available for sale, also to establish the minimum sales price for the property and to authorize the selectmen to enter into any agreements to dispose of the property. So in a little bit more detail, as soon as we understood a little bit more that the current Beal School was going to be relocated and specifically relocated to 214 Lake Street, the former Glavin property, the Board of Selectmen formed the Beal Reuse Committee. And that committee worked very closely with town staff and residents and also participated in a lot of our town center planning work to understand what would be desirable uses for that property if the town were to sell the property to an outside entity. We did a variety of interior studies on the property of the building when we were going through the feasibility study for the building to see if the school could actually stay on the site or not. So we have a lot of information there. And then we've also worked with a consultant to understand what are some concepts that may be desirable to a developer coming in. Most recently, the Beal Reuse Committee presented to the Board of Selectmen in the summer of 2019 their suggested findings for the reuse of the property. And all of that can be detailed on the website. Perhaps a mixed-use type of entity. There really wasn't a huge call of if the building were to be demolished or not demolished. Perhaps bringing a building closer to the street, a desire for public or shared parking for town center use. And then most recently, the Beal Reuse Committee was transferred to what's called the Beal RFP Committee. The Town of Shrewsbury was awarded a grant from Mass Development to actually craft a request for proposal to dispose of the property. And Article 23 is really the linchpin that would allow for the town to issue that request for proposal to be issued to potential developers to respond to. So again, this article asks really to do three things. One, to transfer the land to the Board of Selectmen for the disposition. Also, under state law, we must make through town meeting a minimum sales price. We, as staff, are suggesting that that be a dollar. The town in general has had a conversation that there are many costs associated with this property, whether the new person to, the new entity to purchase it would be to reuse the building. The building was built in the 1920s and has obviously had upgrades, but for any other use other than a school would require significant financial costs. Or if a potential developer or group wanted to demolish the building and revitalize the site, that would be a substantial cost as well. And the general consensus of the town so far has been that they wish this property to be redeveloped for the greater good of the town center and greater good of the Town of Shrewsbury. It may be a taxpaying entity. It may be able to lift tax rates and tax values throughout the town center. So that is why a dollar is being asked for. So if this article does pass, shortly thereafter, the request for proposal would be issued. The Beal RFP Committee would review those proposals as they come in with assistance from the consultant. And then the process would move forward through a standard public process. So that's it in a nutshell, and I'm happy to take any questions related to Article 23.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Last. Any questions or comments from the committee? Christian, I do have a question. Through the process, if we do end up selling this property for a dollar to someone, are there going to be any stipulations that the concept that they present absolutely has to be built? I mean, we've, this town has had beautiful concepts before us in other cases, and they haven't come to fruition. So if we sold the property for a dollar, do we have any reassurance that it will actually get developed for what we're anticipating?
Yes, so that's the purpose of the Board of Selectmen entering into the agreement. So the request for proposal has been crafted as such that the concept for proposal is somewhat of a binding concept and that they would have to move forward in that fashion and actually have to execute in a certain period of time as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any other questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you. We're going to move on to Article 24. Mr. Mizikar.
Madam Chair, would you mind if we talked in concept about both 24 and 25 as they're closely related?
Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So both Articles 24 and 25 seek to use water funds to acquire two parcels of land, one at 268 North Quinn Siggeman Avenue and one at 274 North Quinn Siggeman Avenue for water purposes. The current owners of both of these properties came forward to the town and seeing an opportunity that Mr. Rowley will describe related to the location of these properties. For 268, we seek $245,000, which would include a $200,000 acquisition price and the balance to be used for the demolition of the structures and the cleanup of the property. And then for 274 North Quinn Siggeman Avenue, an additional $103,000 for the acquisition of that vacant parcel of land. Both properties are currently under purchase and sale agreement with a $5,000 deposit on hand. So if I may, Madam Chair, have Mr. Rowley describe the intent and the reasoning behind purchasing these two particular parcels.
Yes, please, Mr. Rowley.
Okay, can I present my...
Okay, can I present my screen? I'll show a map that describes the Zone 1 around the wells. That's okay?
Yep, great.
Yes, please.
See here. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, so, this is a unique opportunity for us to purchase 268 North Quincy and 274. They both fall within our Zone 1, 400-foot buffer around our wells at the Lambert's Pit. And we are required to either own or control the use of those lands, and obviously that regulation has changed since the wells were put in. So, this would allow us to remove the home and have control and protect these two sources of water. I did look back for a calendar year 2019, and they produced about a little over 11% of our water supply for the year from this source. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rowley. Any questions or comments from the committee members? Seeing none, any further questions or comments from the staff? And this is on both Articles 24 and 25. Any comments from the public on Articles 24 and 25? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you.
We're now going to move on to Article number 26. Mr. Mizakar?
Kevin, you're muted.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sorry. Any questions? No, I'm just kidding. So, Article 26 proposes to acquire three parcels of land using Selco funding, 234 Boston Turnpike, 2 through 4 Worthington Avenue, and 6 through 8 Worthington Avenue. This land is currently owned by National Grid and totals approximately 0.91 acres. And Selco would utilize this land as it's adjacent to their, their current substation, which is known as the Logan Station at 12 through 14 Worthington Ave. So, it is just an acquisition, authorization for acquisition of property. Selco funds would be used to make this acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Mizakar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Adler.
Yes, hi. What, I'm not sure what it is that Selco is actually going to use it for, can you elaborate, please?
So, it's my understanding that, I don't, Mr. Icarino may be on the phone, or, excuse me, maybe on the video conference, he would be the best to describe it, or if Mr. Roy has more information. If not, I'll take a shot at it from my knowledge.
Sure, I certainly can detail what I've been briefed on in the first few days. So, my understanding, again, it's a, in large part, an opportunistic purchase where, given its location next to an existing substation, that gives us the ability to leverage it for future use. That is combined, considered in conjunction with the fact that it's offered at a very steep reduction in price from its assessed value. So, so, the idea is, the base fallback plan would be, you know, the idea is, in theory, we could be commissioning that other substation in 10 to 12 years as we work on other infrastructure upgrades. And so, the combination of all those parcels put together represent a valuable, you know, asset that could be leveraged in the future for, for either a sale purpose or a future substation use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Any other questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Any other questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 27, Mr. Mizakar.
Article 27 is an article that we will seek the feet of when we were originally developing the warrant in the spring, and we are still in design development of a sidewalk that will extend from the new Beale School at 214 Lake Street, the whole way down and connect into the next street that has a sidewalk, which is Hiley or Drive. So, at that time, there was a potential that we needed to secure an easement, or at least a temporary construction easement to construct the sidewalk, but that no longer is necessary, so we will seek the feet of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Mizakar. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 28. Mr. Mizakar.
Great. Article 28 is a traditional article that changes in form, and it's the acceptance of public ways that are now ready, which are part of a subdivision. And I'll let Mr. Howland describe that process, if you will.
Got to unmute. Thank you, Mr. Mizakar. So, we are looking to have a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road accepted at the town meeting. These roads were built under subdivision control law. All work has been completed, except they will be cleaning out, final cleaning of the catch spaces and the drain lines, which we typically require a week or so prior to town meeting. We've talked to developer, and they will be doing that probably next week. But all other work has been done, and this is, so Nelson Point Road used to be private, but when they built Point Road, which was off of it, that was made be public down to and just beyond Point Road.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, Mr. Adler?
The, I don't see the report, the plan that was supposed to be, that was filed with the clerk or whatever it was, I'm sorry. Usually, we get a map for this or some sort of diagram showing us what we're looking at and what the changes are. And there's even language, I'm just trying to find it now, language in the motion. I'm sorry, this is Article 28. Yeah, I'm showing plans filed in the office of the town clerk entitled Article 28. Normally, we get those. Are we not going to get those?
No, you certainly will get them, sorry for the oversight, we can get those electronic files out to you tomorrow that detail these streets.
I'm sure this is nothing shocking, it's not terribly interesting, I just, I was just, I just wondered if I wasn't, like, missing something.
Yep, it's a valid point.
Okay, now Nelson Point Road, that's, that's a really old road in the town, isn't it? I mean, this isn't the new subdivision, or is it just this one little section of it, that is?
So, Mr. Adler, the Nelson Point Road, you are correct, it was an old, very old road off of Lake Street, and that was upgraded as part of the subdivision, which was Point Road, which is off of Nelson Point Road. So, in order to make Point Road public, we required that a portion, the first part of Nelson Point Road from Lake Street down to the intersection with Point Road be made public also.
So, it's just that poor, short, it's just that one section of Nelson Point?
That is correct.
Thank you, that's fine, thank you.
Mr. Howland, in the description, it says to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or taking by eminent domain. Are we actually talking about taking by eminent domain in this case?
I believe that's been historically how the town has taken subdivision streets, is by a friendly eminent domain. They are giving, they're required under subdivision control, that the town accepts these streets, and the town historically has done it by eminent domain, at least that's how the language has been stated in the descriptions.
Is this a friendly eminent domain?
Yes, it is.
If I, if I can just add, Madam Chair, the reason that we take it by eminent domain, because eminent domain clears all, any adverse leans against any aspect of this parcel once we take it, so it wipes everything out in case anything would be missed, so it's really a formality. Again, as Mr. Howland stated, it's been a part of the subdivision control plan from day one. It's just kind of a belts and suspenders approach to make sure that no one has any interest in town property.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So, this is Article 28, so I'm going to ask the committee once again if there's any further questions or comment. Seeing none, does the staff have anything further questions, comments? And does the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Section D, funding for outside entities, and we're going to go to Article number 17, Mr. Mizakar.
Sure, Article 17 is a request to transfer $150,000 from free cash to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, which is the town's partner entity for individual's physical, emotional, and mental health well-being. They provide valuable service within the community. This $150,000 matches the total amount that was given to SYSF during fiscal year 20, although those funds came in two separate appropriations, the majority in the spring and then about another $33,000 in the fall. So, this will be used for services to residents through the, through Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mizakar. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee?
Judy, this is Hannah, can I just say something?
Certainly, welcome.
Thank you, I've been here for a long time, I just have been quiet. The only thing I would say is that in the past few years, I've been able to get money in the state budget for SYFS, but given the situation of the budget this year, I do not expect to get any money from them, so I think that the town's investment is really critical, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Hannah. Any further questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Article 39, Mr. Mizakar.
Thank you, just trying to get way back there. So, this is a request, the utilization of $30,000 from free cash to transfer to the Lake Quincyman Commission. It is used for the management of the lake, and specifically, these funds are used by the commission for the eradication of invasive weeds that have taken root within the lake. What is different this year is over the past three, two years, we've funded $20,000 to the commission. We work very closely with them, basically as their sponsor entity or sponsor town of all the towns that participate on the commission, and we fund them really what's needed, and other towns do as well. So, the additional $10,000 is for additional work within the Lake Quincyman watershed, specifically within Newton Pond. Newton Pond is at the headwaters of Lake Quincyman, and what feeds from Newton contributes to the water quality of the lake itself. And Newton Pond has a massive bloom and outbreak of various invasive weeds, and this $10,000 would be the first step towards eradicating those weeds along with other measures. It has the support of the residents that live around Newton Pond and the commission, and this is something that we've been working with them, with Representative Kane on, for about the last two and a half or three years, at least, that's my duration, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mizakar. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the staff? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. That concludes our review this evening of the scheduled warrant articles. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing until tomorrow night, July 23rd, at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Second. And second.
Thank you, seconded multiple times. Okay, I'm going to have a roll call now for the vote. Mr. Adler?
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Chubbler?
Aye.
Ms. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ruben?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Vetter?
Aye.
So, we are now, continued until tomorrow night. We're going to now move into, to the item number five, the potential deliberation in action relative to the recommendations of the Finance Committee to be made at the 2020 annual town meeting. Mr. Mizakar?
Madam Chair, the committee traditionally waits until the end of the full warrant to deliberate on your recommendations for these, and I think we certainly could do that again, and this will be another item that would be included on your next agenda.
Okay, very good. And then our meeting schedule, obviously, we've already said that we're continuing the public hearing until tomorrow night, it's 6:30. And then, the pre-town meeting is still, has a TBA, and hopefully, everyone knows by now that town meeting is going to be Saturday at 8:30 AM, August 8th. Are there any other questions or comments, Mr. Mizakar?
Madam Chair, if I could just take the opportunity to promote, you know, our big careers on SMC, doesn't just include your meetings, but a number of us got together today from a town staff perspective to go through each and every warrant article in a separate taping, to kind of make sure that we can both be very efficient at town meeting and not have to make a lot of public presentations, and at the same time have town, town meeting members as informed as possible, and maybe limit questions on the various warrant articles. So, that'll be airing on SMC over the course of the next few days, so if anyone missed the first part of this hearing or wants to hear it again, that's another format that they'd be able to hear details about every warrant article that will be presented at town meeting. It was, took a little bit less than two hours today, so it's just another opportunity for town meeting members and the public to inform themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, that's excellent news, thank you, I think I'm definitely going to tune in for that. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Staff? Okay, may I have an emotion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, I'm going to do a roll call.
Judy, you're on mute.
Man, I don't know, I don't know how that keeps happening, okay, sorry. Mr. Chubbler?
Aye.
Ms. Howard? Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ruben?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Vetter?
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.